Good evening, if I can draw your attention please. My name is John Milner and I'm the Chair of the Residents of Red Wing. And on behalf of all the members, I'd like to thank you all for showing up tonight. And also to thank all the candidates who showed up tonight. I know that the residents of Red Wing do not endorse any particular candidate or any office, but we do appreciate unopened fair elections and we appreciate the access to all the candidates here. I'd like to also introduce our moderator, Dr. Glenn Correll. Dr. Correll has lived in Virginia Beach for forty years. For twenty years, he was a TV anchor for the senior civilian in Norfolk, a specialty TKR TV. In the last ten years, he's been a professor of communications at TKR University here in Virginia Beach. Thank you, Dr. Correll.
Thank you, John. Welcome. We're glad to have you here and we hope you learned a lot tonight. And perhaps will even decide which council candidate deserves your support. Now, let me give you a little look at the ground rules of what we're going to do tonight. We're going to start off with each candidate introducing themselves. They will have two minutes to do so. And we'll start at this end with Mr. Moss. We have a timer here. The timer is going to keep track of their two minutes. At thirty seconds, she's going to hold up a yellow folder. That means you have half a minute left. At ten seconds, you'll see two, red and yellow together. You have ten seconds. At your expiration time, you'll see just the red folder. And that means shut off. Okay? And we hope you will abide by that. Following that, I'm going to ask two questions. And each of the candidates will have against two minutes, but they are not required to take the full two minutes. And we hope they won't. And once they finish answering those two questions, then you, the audience, are invited to come up to the lectern and ask a question. You may direct it at the entire panel, or you may direct it at a specific candidate. And once again, they will have two minutes to answer your question. We ask you not to make a speech, just to come up and ask the question. That way, we'll get as many of your questions answered as we can by our deadline of eight o'clock. Does anybody have any questions before we begin? Everybody good? Panel, do you have any questions? In which case, Mr. Moss, please stand and you have two minutes to tell us your agenda.
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. Thank you for coming out here this evening. When someone says, you know, what do councilmen really do? Their obligation is to balance the present against the future, just like you do at your home. You try to take care of yourself, but you're also thinking about your children, your future. Sometimes it's not enough when you go around doing all those things like you like, the city's in the same place. Why, why? The council's job is to balance how much money it takes of your money to do a public good versus how much money you must keep to take care of your needs. That's another kind of balance, private versus public need. In essence, being on council is just like sitting on a family budget table. It's all about choices. What kind of choices do you make? And who do you want making those choices for you for the next four years? Let me just share with you some of those choices. Police chief wants fifty-nine more of them, about seven million dollars. Fire chief wants about forty-four firefighters, that's about three million dollars. They have about a three million dollar shortfall for the schools. You can see how it starts to add up. And now that's like, I guess where all the money comes from? Us. So those are the kind of choices we are going to face. How do I face those issues? I think it takes so much money, and it has to learn to live within its means. So I'm not in favor of increasing tax rates until the city's budget is as tightly managed as our own budget. And I know we haven't gotten there yet. But just a little bit about them, this is my third term of serving on city council. I'm a fiscal conservative. I've been commonsense-thinking the issue. I invite you to look at my biography in the back of my brochure. And my focus is changing our fiscal policy to make us more attractive for attracting high wage pay jobs. We can't create those jobs if we couldn't do the bare minimum.
Thank you, Mr. Moss.
Good evening, Red Wing.
Good evening.
Good evening, Red Wing.
Good evening.
My name is Brad Martin. I am currently serving as one of the at-large seats on city council. I was appointed in January to fill the seat of Phil Distef, when citizens of Virginia Beach elected him to be one of our state delegates in Richmond. So I've spent about nine months on the city council, and I'm really enjoying myself doing it, quite frankly. It is a heavy burden, it's a heavy responsibility, but we've got a good team and I think we're doing a good job. I'm a native of Tidewater. My parents met when they were students at Princess Anne High School. I was born in Norfolk, moved away to college, and came right back to Virginia Beach. So I am about as native as you can get. I'm also a civil engineer. I designed the site design for development projects. And I started my own firm, Martin Engineering, in 2007. So I know what it is to be a business owner, I know what it is to create jobs in the city, and I know what it is to improve property in the city and improve property value. We are doing some exciting things on city council right now. We are balancing the revenues that we get from the citizens, and we also have lots of opportunities that we are making decisions about. We've got baseball stadiums, we've got light rails, we've got arenas. We've also got some challenges. We've got flooding and stormwater issues. We've got sea level rise. A lot of these things are civil engineering issues, and quite frankly, I feel like I bring a skill set as both a civil engineer and a business owner in city council that is a needed set of characteristics that I'd like to continue to serve on city council for the next four years. I hope you'll go to my website, redmart.org, if you want to find out more information. But I'm Brad Martin, in the at-large seat on city council, running for your support this November. Thank you very much.
My name is George Furman III. I'm a resident of, used to be Bayside, now I'm a resident of Kensington. I'm running for city council because I'm a concerned citizen. I am concerned that the city right now is going to put us in a position where we're going to be like a lot of households, we're going to be owing more than we can actually pay. I'm here to, what you call, help balance the budget or bring a balance to whatever is going on in the city council. I don't know exactly everything. I would like to learn, I'd like to get the opportunity to get up there and show you my wheres. What have I done to myself in this position? One, I used to be in the joint chief of staff, and one of my jobs when I first got there was they told me that they wanted to get total accountability of the joint chief of staff, and they gave me a year to do it. Within six months, I had everything signed for, everything accounted for, and I made sure that everything that was done was done properly. They gave me a couple awards for it because bottom line, they didn't think I could do it. But I am a can-do type person. You give me a task, I'm going to do it. Why should you elect me? Bottom line is, if you take my face and put your face in that position, you'll see yourself. Because bottom line, I'm more worried about the taxpayers than I am about contractors and any of these other folks. I'm more worried about the people that actually pay the bills, and those are the ones that I'm concerned about because I believe they're not being taken care of. Thank you very much. Have a question.
Good evening, everyone. My name is Ben Davenport, and I'm a native of Virginia Beach. I'm a graduate of the city public school system. I am a residential real estate broker, work out of Virginia Beach in the Hilltop area. And I guess my story starts in June of this year. And at that time, I filed all my paperwork to get in this race. And ever since that time, I've been out in the community. I've been talking to folks just like you, asking what the issues are and what people's concerns are. And the first question that people always ask me is, Ben, why are you running for city council? Now, I graduated from Cox High School. I graduated with five hundred and forty people in my class. Forty percent of the people that I graduated with don't live in Virginia Beach anymore. Forty percent. Now, you all know what the story is. A lot of them after college, they took jobs in big cities, DC, New York, Los Angeles, all over the country, you name it. And a lot of them are never coming home. And they're not coming home because they don't like Virginia Beach. They're not coming home because we don't have the same types of opportunities that these larger cities have. My focus is going to be attracting new investment to our city. There are several ways that we can do that. The bio task forces being formed in the ITA area. Everybody's familiar with the Amphitheater, Princess Anne Centerra Health Campus, Life Net, Operation Smile. We can attract biomedical research companies to this area. And folks, those are the high-paying jobs that my friends, your children, and your grandchildren are going to come back to Virginia Beach for. That's why I'm running. My name is Ben Davenport. I have a website, votendavenport.com, and I hope to earn your support tonight.
My name is Harvey Burton, and I'm running for city council for the Princess Anne District. I'm a native of Hampton Roads, I'm from Virginia Beach. I grew up in the Strawberry Ridge neighborhood, and this is a neighborhood that I still live into this day with my wife and our beautiful eight-year-old daughter. Much like everybody questioned when I'm in campaigning, is why are you running, Harvey? And the reason I tell them is because I've just been sitting around and doing public service all my life, and I was really honestly sick and tired of the ways I seen things happen on city council. At the water cooler, when we're up there at work, I would say, you know, we hear everything that's going on, and you'd be like, well, how are we building a river? How are we trying to build a light rail? And what I couldn't understand is because I do so much ministry work, and I was like, well, how, what are we doing for our homeless? What are we doing for our kids in our education system? You know, I'm a director of operations, and I spend a lot of my time with your children and my child in the Virginia Beach public school system. It's a shame that we can think of anything else other than to help our kids and our teachers with the necessary resources that they need. It's a shame how we left the homeless out on the street and we haven't provided any kind of resources for them, just to live a honest, regular life here in Hampton Roads. So I stand here as a voice for a lot of the people who are concerned, a lot of the people who say that they are tired of the same, same old, same old. We've had the same city council members for the last few years, and I believe it's time for us to change it up and for some new blood and some new ideas. With that, I bring to the table jobs. I'm a small business owner myself, so I know what it's like to employ people. It's time for us to bring some meaningful jobs here to the Virginia Beach area. Not jobs that are going to be concessions, stamps, snacks. It's time for some manufacturing jobs. I supported Scott Riddle when he was talking about coastal investments. I support innovative districts in health that would actually employ people immediately. I support manufacturing jobs and common sense compromise with the city council members to actually bring more people here. It's a sad thing, a harsh reality, that we lose a lot of our veterans, we lose a lot of our college kids to go out of town and retire to other places when they couldn't retire right here in Hampton Roads. We have to give them the necessary resources. We have to give this city back to the citizens who actually paid the taxes on it, and I hope to do that and achieve that in my debt to city council. Thank you.
I'm Barbara Henley, and I'm running for reelection to the Princess Anne District CEO of the city council. I'm a native of the city. I have a bachelor in education and a master's in urban studies from Overland University. My family and I own and operate Henley Farm in Florida. I served on city council often on for about thirty years, and I voted on literally thousands of issues. But my primary concern has always been, and my area of expertise, is planning and development. How the city grows and develops and the stability of our neighborhoods is a primary concern to me. I know that our city's comprehensive plan is a guide for development, and sometimes it needs to be tweaked, and sometimes there need to be compromises. But I believe that every homeowner should be able to rely on the plan that was in effect at the time that you purchased your home for investment. We are beginning the five-year review of our comprehensive plan, and it's extremely important that you take part in the stakeholder opportunities that you will have to give your input. I believe the one for your area is the eastern area, which is scheduled for Thursday, October 30th, at the convention center. You need to be present to express your concerns for how you want your area to look in the future. This is a very exciting time to run the city council in Virginia Beach. Virginia Beach, you know, is the largest city of the Commonwealth with almost four hundred and fifty thousand people. We have a lot of opportunities, we have a lot of challenges, and it's the bright, and it's the privilege, and it's the necessity for the citizens of Virginia Beach to have knowledgeable, effective leadership at this very challenging time. I look forward to answering more of your questions during the question and answer.
My name is Louis Jones. I'm running unopposed for the Bayside seat. I was first elected to city council in 1982 and was at that time elected mayor. The reason I ran the first time is because I wanted to solve the water problem. And I led the fight to, you know, Lake Ashton as our water source in Virginia Beach and for, also that part of South Anthony. I've been involved in many things, education. I served on the committee that put together the plans to either build new or renovate twenty-three elementary schools here in Virginia Beach. I've been involved in environmental issues, and that I worked very hard to protect, pleasure outpoint and keep it from being developed into eleven hundred new homes on that property, and now it's preserved forever. I worked very hard to negotiate the deal to purchase Stupula as a preserve city. I've worked hard on all the projects that I've been involved in, the town center, which I was one of the first liaisons. I'm here running again tonight because I see other things that need to be done in the city. I think I have the experience and the time to do it, and I appreciate your vote and your initial vote. Thank you.
Good evening. My name is Jim Wood. I am running for reelection, unopposed, in Lynn Haven District. It's been my honor to serve y'all since 2002 continuously, all the city councils representing that district. A little bit about me, I grew up in Virginia Beach, lived here since I was two years old. I grew up in Amelia, live in Kingscrand right now. And since I've been on council, I have worked in a number of wide variety of areas. I'm a liaison to the town center project along with the vice mayor. Right down the street here, I'm a liaison to the animal control advisory board, which I will tell you, that's an interesting in and of itself, the different constituencies and the way people care for their animals. Sandler Center, Hampton Roads Transit, are just a couple of other areas that I've been involved with. Since I've been on council, we've faced a lot of very difficult issues over time. The BRAC Commission, everybody remembers that. We're very, I guess what I would call it is the council equivalent of a major health scare in your family. Because we had a very real possibility of losing a major employer in Hampton or in Virginia Beach. And we are now a model recognized throughout the country as how to deal with encroachment. We also had, you know, the worst economic conditions since the Great Depression hit us, since I've been on council. So we've had to deal with an awful lot. But what I will tell you is when I hear some of the folks here who are challenging, they're talking about, you know, Virginia Beach needs to be better, needs to be better, Virginia Beach is now standing place. I, like everybody else, I want my kids to come back and live here. Both of my kids went off to school, they got graduate degrees, both of my kids are now employed in Virginia Beach. I consider that a success. I appreciate your vote on, in November. Thank you very much.
Hi, my name is John Urin, and I'm a Navy brat. Came here after second grade, been here ever since. Grew up in Virginia Beach, graduated from Kellum High School. I started working in the hotel industry back in the eighties, working in a small hotel. Worked there through college and actually have gone on and now work for a management company, operating several hotels down at the waterfront. It's been my pleasure to serve the Red Wing community and the beach district, where I've been, had the pleasure of being, serving for the last eight years. Have the pleasure of coming to your neighborhood and helping you through a number of different issues throughout that time period. There has been an awful lot that we've done. I'm going to tell you a lot of things that the other candidates are going to say here in terms of my focus on job growth. I have two young children, a three and a five-year-old, and I am scared to death that they will grow up and then they go and not return home. And I would love for them, just as your children, your grandchildren would do, to have the opportunity to come back here and prosper in the city that I love and that I know that you all love as well. So if I'm fortunate enough to be returned to office this November, those are the types of things that I'll be working on. There's a lot of initiatives that we already have in play in terms of really massaging our opportunities with military and the private sector. It's my hope to be continuing to work hard in that endeavor and have some really big wins. But I thank you all for having me here tonight. Thank you.
My name is Steven Johnston, and I'm running for the city council position at Rose Hall. It's a special election this year where Glenn Davis got elected state delegate, he'll sit permanently. I'm a native, I wasn't born here, but I, like everybody else, I've come to Virginia Beach in the military. Grew up just down the street, lived in an old Navy house on Harper Road, we moved into the Rose Hall District just off of Oak Creek Boulevard. Right now, I just live just down the street here at Lake Classic. My son went to Kempf, went to Corporate Land in Middle School, got a great education there, qualified to go to the Health Science Academy. We got really good, we're doing really great here in Virginia Beach. But there's an aging curve. May you live in interesting times. And if you talk to everybody on city council, they'll tell you, things are getting interesting here in Virginia Beach. The question now I'm raising is, where do we want to invest our money? Do we want to invest the people's money in an arena, in a dome site, in the parachute facility, buying things for the developers, parking garages at every parking garage at town center? Or do we want to take this money and invest it in businesses? Lowering taxes on businesses will attract new businesses to the area, and new businesses be new and better jobs. Terry McCullough, our governor, announced that there's a Canadian company coming into Taylor Farms. Part of their agreement is they'll not pay any state taxes for three years. The state of New York's running a program, come to New York, don't pay any state taxes for ten years. These programs are working in other places, they can work here. If a company's looking to relocate to Hampton Roads, we want them, or I want them, to look in Virginia Beach and say, Virginia Beach has a lower tax liability on their company, and they'll come here to Virginia Beach first. And they'll bring us the jobs, not the minimum wage jobs that we're getting at Hobby Lobby and Walmart grocery stores. We'll get the quality jobs like the two hundred engineering jobs we lost two weeks ago. My name's Steven Johnston. Virginia Beach is a great place. I've seen it grow from when I've grown up. We're a small rural community, we are where now, but we're at a crossroads. And where do we want to go to the future? Do we want to invest in our businesses and grow, or do we want to become like Atlantic City? My name's Steven Johnston. Thank you.
Good evening. I apologize for the people in the back. The podium is actually taller than me. My name is James Cavan. I'm running for Virginia Beach City Council, represent Rose Hall District. Being acting advisor at Norfolk State University, I enjoy helping students be able to achieve their dream and getting their degree. While being here in Virginia Beach, married to my lovely wife for eight years, I have a nine-month-old baby girl. I've worked hard in the community, tired of it, working to bring issues and concerns to the mayor after mayor's roundtable, bringing concerns and creating solutions for city council. I've worked diligently on the light rail now as a board member, talking about the pros and the cons, educating the citizens about the pros and the cons of light rail. I've also worked hard in the community and local high schools, helping at-risk youth, talking to them about the importance of their education, going on, getting their degree, staying in school, civic engagement. All this has led me to the opportunity to realize and understand the importance why I should run again for city council. Look, if you look at it, I originally ran in 2010, and here we are in 2014, still facing the same issue. But when I'm elected to city council, I look forward to tackling those issues, such as education. I want to make sure that when my daughter's ready to go to school, that the school systems are ready for her. I want to make sure when we tackle tough issues and choices like transportation, that we make sure that we take care of this traffic. I don't know about you, but I know I live right off of Rosemont Avenue, and I'm tired of traffic. And this system, while a great system, has done poorly for us. So I look forward to making sure that we work hard to make sure we tackle these tough choices. I want to make sure when I'm elected to city council, I address the issues such as taxes and fees. I know for me, you know, I look at my trash can every day. We have trash fees. Our trash fees keep going up. They keep telling us, hey, guess what? We're not raising your taxes, but you're sure enough raising my fees. And I know my pay is not going up. My income's not going up, and I can't continue to afford that. And I know that I'm not a liar. And that's why I look forward to representing you, because I want to represent you, the people, the people that make the difference. Again, my name is James Cavan, and I look forward to representing you as city councilman for Rose Hall District.
Good evening. Hi, my name is Shannon Kane, and I am the city council representative for Rose Hall District. I replaced Glenn Davis when he, I was appointed to replace Glenn when he won his seat for House of Delegates back in November. I've enjoyed serving this year, and the reason I've enjoyed serving is because that's what I do. My by-ground is in the nonprofit world. I've worked in the nonprofit world my whole life because I do just want to make a difference and I want to help. And people look at me and think, well, that's nice, that's cute, but that's who I am. I listen. I want to listen to you. I want to listen to what people say and what they want, because that's what I'm about. I am a small business owner. I have a marketing company here in Virginia Beach. We do association management and marketing. I have a son. Most like for many of the other candidates here, I have a little son, he's five. And my heart is making sure he comes here. I want to see my grandbabies when they grow up or when they're born, if I'm blessed to have them. And I want them to have the opportunities to make their life here in Virginia Beach, as you've heard tonight. But my campaign, my slogan is "Virginia Beach for Everyone," and I truly mean that. We need good paying jobs. We do need that for those coming out of the military that have that high experience and that expertise. We need those technical jobs that's going to employ them. But we also need jobs, not every kid is going to go to college. We need jobs at every level throughout the circuit. So if we have hobby hobby jobs or some of those other things that come into town, we need those. Because not everybody is an engineer, and not everyone is going to qualify for those high, high technical jobs in the biomedical field. But we need all of those to make it all happen. We also need good schools. We have good schools. We need to continue to invest in those schools and make sure that we keep that up. And then the final thing that I'm running on is public safety. We do truly appreciate having safe neighborhoods, safe streets. I love it that my kid can go outside and ride his bike and play in the yard and I don't have to worry. That means a lot to me as a mom. So my name is Shannon Kane. I would love your vote on November fourth, and I'll be happy to answer any questions later. Thank you.
Beatrice Browder, is that the way to pronounce her?
Yeah, that's exactly how you pronounce it.
She also is running for the Rose Hall seat, and she could not be here tonight. We're going to allow her representative, Robert Dean, to make a statement, and then he will leave and not obviously answer any questions, reference her candidacy. Robert?
I just got this email, so bear with me. I'm going to try to go through it real quickly, and it's on my laptop. "When I moved to Virginia Beach, my plans were to retire here. I love the beach and the bay. The people are nice and the weather is perfect. However, with over five hundred taxes and fees, it's becoming a financial challenge. I have a degree in business marketing and restaurant management and culinary degree, so I thought Virginia Beach was the perfect place to utilize my experience. I've been in the hospitality industry all of my life, and I have a clear understanding of what serving is about. Politics begins at home. It's not the developers that make the city great, it's the everyday working people and small business owners that make Virginia Beach great. It's the churches, the synagogues, and the temples. It's the Boy Scouts and Girl Scouts, run by dedicated volunteers. It's folks like you. All too often, I hear people say that I'm wasting my time trying to make a difference in government. Well, the alternative to doing nothing is not an option. I believe there would be more citizen involvement if people knew those representing them were listening to and hearing what they have to say, instead of allowing propaganda such as Vote Yes to Light Rail Study to be plastered all over the city. On the issue of light rail, there certainly is a rush hour congestion problem in Virginia Beach. However, the fact that light rail will not reduce traffic congestion has been made loud and clear. At present, our public transportation bus system is not reliable, and I believe that needs corrected way before any talk of building a light rail. The cost of light rail will fall on the backs of beach taxpayers and businesses with no congestion relief, but plenty of new taxes and fees. Virginia Beach should be known for eliminating the barriers that impede opening businesses and creating new jobs. Limiting and dreaded business professional occupation license tax would certainly be a step in the right decision, right direction rather. After all, the meat pole tax was enacted two hundred and two years ago to help pay for the war of eighteen twelve. I believe that bill's been paid. We need to make Virginia Beach business friendly. Imagine what Apple or Google coming to Virginia Beach could do in the way of providing jobs. I'm sorry, I'm out of time, right? Thank you very much. I love Petey's brochures over here, and if you would like to get a copy of hers, please see me after this, and I'll be glad to email it to you. Thank you very much."
I would like to thank the candidates, all of whom stuck to the timely instructions, I would like to thank the candidates, all of whom stuck to the timely instructions, and I'm very grateful for that. I know how painful that is for politicians. The first question, we are in Red Wing, and as you might imagine, this comes from residents from Red Wing. At the entrance to our neighborhood, on the border of Oceana and General Booth, where the SPCA was formerly located, is a beautiful stand of trees. This stand of trees provides real benefits to our neighborhood. Increased mold boundaries, noise and temperature buffer, ecosystem benefits in addition to others. Recently, it was under the threat of development. A proposal for a car dealership was moving forward. That has now been taken off the table. We have formally requested that the area with driving strands of trees be protected as open space. So with this in mind, what is your position on the importance of the North General Booth wooded corridor as a freeway and the former SPCA property specific? And we'll start with Mr. Moss and ask each of you to come.
As an example of how the current council does listen, you told us you didn't want the car dealership. We found a way to deal with that comprehensive plan, and we did listen, and there's the car dealership. I'm not in a position to share nor the other incumbents' or executive session discussions about the acquisition of that property. But I can tell you, we are looking at the active, acquired property and how to acquire it, under what terms, and where to find the money. So we are predisposed to acquire the property, and that direction we're pursuing. But obviously, you wouldn't want us to compromise our strategy, and that drives up our price. We have to acquire other land that goes with it to make it work, the way I wish you know I speak the way you don't own the land that we were going to sell. If you were to give one question. So I am in favor of looking at an open space, but there might have to be some trade there. That's a big, it's like 10-acre parcel I do that's supposed to be right, so maybe some of that really could be done for something. But if it's going to be open space, it needs to be usable open space, because we got a big park. So I think we need to come back to a larger community, not just Red Wing, but a larger community who has to come up with the money to see what the best answer is. Acquire the property, I believe we're going to do that. The terms and conditions under which, I think that's still open for discussion and negotiation with the neighborhood and the larger community.
As far as the corner piece of property there, as a civil engineer, I am an agent for developers and contractors and construction companies. I generally like to see property get developed. It means construction jobs. It means improved property values. It means a higher value of that specific property, which then turns some money into the revenue stream for the city. I am totally against that corner getting developed, primarily because of the traffic situation there. You've got those right turns screaming by that corner, and that becomes a very difficult in-and-out situation. You're ending up backdoor entrance would be a difficult situation for the residents there in the neighborhood right behind it. So I am all for saving that property as open space. The city already owns a couple other pieces of that property, right around that property, so it becomes a nice useful piece of open space, whether we do something active recreation with swing sets and gym equipment, or if it just stays passive, it just stays the open space. Quite frankly now, with the stormwater mandates that the city is going to have to start dealing with that will pass down from the EPA and the state, keeping green areas like that helps us with our stormwater management. So I am a big advocate for saving green space like that when it makes sense to do so, and I think this is one case that it absolutely does.
Bottom line is, trees make air. I don't know if anybody knew that, but I kind of privy of that, you know? Common sense is that you need to keep as much trees and stuff of that form fashioned in the area as possible to make sure that we don't expire ourselves. So as far as keeping that area the way it is, I'm for it. I have no reason to go against it. I mean, the bottom line is, greenery is important, and I believe that's a very important thing. Thank you.
My father always tells me that the squeaky wheel gets the oil, and it sounds like you guys have made your voices heard. I'm glad to hear that the council has changed the comprehensive plan to eliminate the option for automobile dealership. And I believe that preserving green open space is good for everyone. Just like Brad and Mr. Moss said, acquiring the property for the city would be a deal where we would have to make it a usable space for everyone. Which essentially what that means is, some of the trees would need to come down. Now, I would be an advocate for providing bumpers. I'd be an advocate for providing as much open space as possible. But, you know, we will deal with that when it comes to works, if I'm elected, that is.
I grew up here. I actually remember very, I remember actually when Oceana's road was actually running right in front of Red Wing's entrance to the neighborhood. And Red Wing Civic League actually stood up and said that this is becoming dangerous for us to turn in, and the city actually cut it off. And so I am all for it, to voice what the community is saying, which is that to leave it as a green space. I would probably, if we were doing any enhancements to that area, I would actually allot for a bike path to go through so that when pedestrians are actually trying to make it down to Burnet, Oceana, I mean Burnet, Ocean Breeze area, they actually have a sidewalk to be able to go directly across, because certainly there is one. You would have to actually cross the street over to the KOA side and ride on the grass, go divert the path. So I actually stand and okay with you guys as far as saying that let's leave it the way it is, and let's just put a bike path so we can actually have a citizen feel to get to and go.
Actually, I never thought that a car dealership was appropriate towards that property fronting on your neighborhood. The traffic and the compatibility of the neighborhood just didn't add up. Your neighborhood transitions between the Dam Neck heavily commercialized area and the area which is described in the comprehensive plan as the General Booth Campgrounds area. And the first recommendation states, "Any future development in this corridor should consist of low-intensity, non-residential uses and retain as much open space and natural vegetation along General Booth Boulevard as possible." We did not change the comprehensive plan. That was the existing comprehensive plan statement. While I cannot discuss specifics of the property that you're most interested in, as Mr. Moss said, I can say that the City Council has declared it worthy of pursuing this as a possible purchase. I will say that I have extreme concern for the uses of that entire property and the compatibility concerns of your neighborhood. As I said earlier, it's very important that you participate in the updated comprehensive plan, which will be underway for the next several months. And you need to take part so that you can say what you want for this area in the continuing comprehensive plan statement.
Well, by now you know we're pursuing the purchase. The truth of the matter is, is that we can't purchase the property yet, but we are pursuing the purchase. It's our intent to purchase it. In my opinion, that the property should be used for some public purpose, whether that's open space or whether it's for some other municipal use, like municipal use. We don't know yet. But the point is, we listened to you, we heard what you had to say. We're trying to buy the property, and when we buy the property, we'll come back to you and ask for your influence, as to how it all happens.
Different from Dr. Brown's instructions, what I do with the vice mayor's decision.
Well, I don't have much to add, but I really do think, as you all know, that this parcel has been a public and a private piece. And clearly, the push to have development in the near term has been created because there's a private owner that wants to have the opportunity to develop that. So we are pursuing this, and very optimistic in the next few weeks, months, that we will have this thing buttoned up. Then after it is publicly owned, Barbara makes a very good point that participating in the update of the comprehensive plan is critical for the entire city. And clearly critical for your neighborhood as well, to make sure that that plan encapsulates exactly what it is that you wish of your community. So thank you, Jeff.
I want to finally show my age, but I remember doing Boy Scout projects at the LSPCA site. If you look at the site the way it sits now, it sits corner of Oceana Boulevard, General Booth. Now, I have been living in Virginia Beach for a very long time, and I do not like the deforestation that's going on here. However, it's called development, and it happens. And if you look at that intersection, currently, the State Traffic Plan, the Transportation Planning Organization lists that intersection as a D. The Navy is concerned about that because they're deploying more forces, more special operations forces to Dam Neck. They need to get easily from Oceana to Dam Neck, which they cannot do with the traffic jams that exist now. And in the near future, they are going to rework that intersection. So there's no permanent development's going to happen there at that site. There's no way to do it. They're going to have to widen the intersection and put in turning lanes so that we can get from Oceana to Dam Neck. But it's, I don't think it's a problem of open space. Like I said in my opening statements, Virginia Beach is a developer-friendly city. There was a Civic League meeting held at Princess Anne Rec Center. Forty people showed up at that meeting. The councilman was there, the developer was there, and all the residents were there. I don't think anybody left that meeting thinking that the residents wanted that development to happen. And yet, that development still pushed forward. It went through planning. It got to the City Council. It wasn't City Council that stopped that. It was the residents who had to show up, complain about this at the meeting, and the developer withdrew the proposal. It wasn't shut down by City Council, the developer withdrew, because he knew it was going to pass. But the problem is, it shouldn't have gotten that far. We're here to represent the people, not the developers. If I'd have been the City Councilman there, I wouldn't have let it got that far. I would have represented the people of Red Wing and not the developers. Thank you.
All right, first of all, I want to just acknowledge my wife and my child who's making all that noise. Obviously, she has a few words she wants to say. But to answer the question, I definitely believe that we need to preserve it. I think what we also need to understand is that, you know, you hear our needs and needs as far as, "Well, I think we should do this, I think we should do that." I think at the end of the day, you know, before we make any enhancements, we need to hear what you all want to do. I'm in favor of listening to what you want to do before making any decisions. And I think that's what matters, and I think that's important, and we need to remember.
Well, there's an advantage and a disadvantage to going last. They've stolen everything I need to say. But as my fellow councilmember stated, we are in the process of looking at purchasing the property, and we did listen to you guys. But I just want to say that in my seat at Rose Hall, we've had two, three, three projects that have come onto my plate during my nine months on council. And what we've done is, I've gone out to the constituents of Rose Hall, and I've sat down with them. I've had city planners, I've had public works, I've had all the different departments to come out and work with the residents of those communities. And we've gotten things changed. We've gotten bushes put in where they didn't need to be, or where they needed to be put in. We've had fences removed where the residents didn't want them. We've made changes to things that developers and projects that they've come to us. We've made changes and we've made things work. We've healed some projects and we've improved some projects. But it's all because I listened, the citizens spoke, and we made it happen. And that's what I'm about. That's what this council truly is about, and that's my opinion.
All right, very good. Thank you, ladies and gentlemen. Your next question is one that I dare say is going to be very controversial for quite some time in the city of Virginia Beach. We're talking, of course, about the light rail system that is being imposed. The mayor of Norfolk would certainly like to see it extended into the resort city, and the mayor of Virginia Beach seems to be heavily in favor of this. If we took a poll of the people here, I don't think it would be a stretch to say that the residents would agree that light rail is a wonderful amenity. That's not the issue, and it never has been. The issue is cost and whether or not we can afford it. The city seems now to acknowledge their desire to have the light rail to support dense development in many areas of the city, specifically town center. Organizations that represent police officers and firefighters have come out in opposition to the light rail, recognizing it will cost millions of dollars. They fear that we've no money left for raises or we've punished the equipment. School teachers have not had a real raise, that is, more money in their take-home pay in several years. The question is very simple. What is your position on the light rail and your rationale for holding that position? Mr. Moss?
Abraham Lincoln once said, "We're republic that's built by the ballot, not by the government." The public told us what in the referendum, you told us, that we should take all steps that are reasonable to finance and extend the time in Virginia Beach. What reasonable is, that is a hundred-dollar question. But we aren't going to know that answer until March. We aren't going to know what's recommended, rapid bus, do-nothing, or light rail. Right now, the cost estimate's at 5% of design, not much confidence in that, and no one has talked about how they plan to pay for it. But let's just say it costs $350 million, the state pays 155, we pay the bounce, we got to pick operating, it's six cents on the real estate tax. That's about 100 years from last September. But then we got to say, is light rail more important than flood control? Is light rail more important than schools? Is light more? And why I say that is, median family income in Virginia Beach fell 4.6% for 13 over 12. Forty percent of our children are on free reduced watch. Virginia Beach is not nearly as wealthy today as it was 10 years ago. These are choices that we have to make. How much are you willing to pay when you know all the unfunded liabilities that you face? And that's the conversation we need to have, once we know the recommendation and once we know the price. So today, I can't tell you the answer, because you told me that I'm supposed to do what's reasonable. I don't know what reasonable is, except I know the price and the recommendation.
It's like Mr. Moss says, this is a question of balancing our challenges against our opportunities. I've got an 11-year-old son, and if he goes away to college, I would certainly hope, like a lot of the folks who've said up here today, that he comes back and raises his family in Virginia Beach or in Tidewater. If that happens, I envision light rail as a part of his transportation solution. And I only say a part of his transportation solution, because this needs to be a much broader conversation about public transit in general. We're not just talking about an east-west line, and we're not even just talking about an east-west line that goes up to the naval base and maybe hits a spur to the airport. We are talking about a public transportation solution that includes bus feeder lines, that includes park-and-ride stations where somebody from Red Wing can get in their car and drive to a stop about three or four minutes away, and then take the train into their job in Norfolk, or take the train down to Greer Prior Mall to go shopping. And when they get there, there's transportation to pick them up. It is such a broader conversation. As far as the current conversation to bring light rail to the town center, to me, that makes a lot of sense. My son, Ken, and I will take the, will drive in the new town road, take the train into a tidescape about twice every season, just for the uniqueness of it. It's a neat little ride to take to the tidescape. Is that going to pay the bills for the tide? Absolutely not. But if you bring it to town center, and if you eventually bring it to the oceanfront, that develops the ridership where it is accessible for the citizens of Virginia Beach. Certainly, the mayor of Norfolk wants the citizens of Virginia Beach to have planes to get on, and that will make his system a little more successful. I see it as a part of a transportation solution. It's about making decisions and taking action today and tomorrow and next week that's going to have a 20, and 30, and 50-year impact for our children and grandchildren.
Okay, I guess I got to be the other guy. Okay, light rail. I'm either for it or against it, but the bottom line is, according to the estimates and things that I've been told, Virginia Beach right now is in debt. So why would you want to make yourself more indebted by bringing something in that's going to cost you more than what you can afford to do with right now? I mean, I'm a common sense kind of guy. I believe in, if you got a hundred dollars, just spend a hundred dollars. If you got a hundred and fifty dollars, just spend a hundred and fifty dollars. But you don't spend more than what you have just because you can. Yes, we have a good credit rating. I like to keep it that way. The bottom line is, light rail... The bottom line is, light rail is very nice, it's a nice-to-have thing. We need to take care of the basic problem that we have right now, it's called busing, and the ridership that we have right now. Stuff that we have right now is not working. It's a proven fact. If a person got to pay 12 dollars to go on a cab, to go to a bus station, something wrong with that system. Bottom line is, fix the problem that we have right now with the budget that we have, and then after that is done, if light rail fits in there, then I'm proponent for it. But I'm not proponent for it right now to put the taxpayers in debt just because we can do it. That doesn't make any sense. Thank you very much, I respect that.
I support light rail, but to me, it's a question of, are we going to be a city of the future, or are we going to be a city in decline? Now, Mr. Moss was right. The report that the city is doing right now is not that completion. The numbers that we have gotten in the presentation from HRT are only based on 5% drawings. Now, we need to finish this report. It would be irresponsible for anybody up here to say, without knowing the final cost of it, that we 100% support light rail. Nothing is worth it at any cost. However, we need to invest in our future. Mr. Moss has seen the cost over the 155 million that the state is offering. This is a once-in-a-lifetime opportunity, make no mistake about it. If we pass on this opportunity, we may never get this money, nor will Virginia get this money. Now, a lot of people, especially a lot of my dad's friends, a lot of my mother's friends talk to me about light rail. They say, "Light rail is crazy. I will never use light rail." Now, I'll tell you the truth. Me, I probably will not be a huge light rail rider as soon as it immediately starts. However, Brad alluded to, I've got two sons, one and three years old. Now, the starter line to town center is just that, it's a starter line. That's not the solution, that's the first step. Light rail to be successful needs to go to Greer Prior, it needs to go to the Norfolk Airport, and it needs to go desperately to the Norfolk Naval Base. However, you can start unless you plan the first seed. This is exactly what that is.
I'm operating by a lot of good points. Just off the top, I'm actually now supporting the light rail. I believe that we need to actually do what City Council took an oath to do, which is to actually be employees of the citizens, and I believe that people want us to actually spend more money a lot better. It's, how can we actually ask to build something of that extravagance? I know we actually voted on it, but how can we ask, actually ask to say, spend this amount of money on that, but we actually haven't upgraded our public service? We haven't actually increased our police force in the last 15 years? We haven't actually given our firefighters any more support as well so they can actually help out with the paramedics, the EMTs and the paramedics? You know, those are things the city council is supposed to be responsible for. We're supposed to actually help you build roads, we're supposed to actually help you live a better quality of life, we're supposed to actually be able to help you actually just live better. It's not actually to build, I mean, transportation is a problem, that's something that they knew a long time ago. But if you look at the track record of the city council, we've built all these other infrastructures and we're let alone to build it as taxpayers. This is another thing that people will be left alone to build, I believe. I believe that if we wanted to do a light rail, we can look into the back end. That's something that they said they would bring out there for free. They would put it down for free, and then if it doesn't work out, they would pick it up and carry it away for free. Why don't we look into those alternative methods right there, which is not basically a light rail? The reason that I believe so is because their special interest is to help, continue to help developers. If you continue to keep developers in your pocket, then it's easier to sway towns to vote in that direction. I don't believe that we should actually do that. I think we should be more responsible for our money. It's important for all of us because at the end of the day, we are the ones that actually have to pay a bill. Ask yourself, Red Wing, when are you going to be able to get on that light rail? It's not actually going to come out into the general loop area, we're going to have to drive all the way down to the oceanfront just to get on it, to get all the way down to Norfolk. I really just hop on a underbridge extended that they put on there, take it straight down to 64 East where I need to get to. So I say no to it, I'm not going to answer any questions going into the vote.
Well, I came prepared to answer the question that you presented, about light rail. However, the open space would give me a lot of concern. I think there are a lot of things that were stated there that really need to be discussed. I'm really concerned about the lack of understanding of our teacher levels and the planning that we have to do in order to be able to attract all of these businesses that everybody wants to have here to bring the high-paying jobs. You know, we really have to understand that there are two sides of this coin. If we don't have people investing in the city, and they have this very hard name, harsh name tonight, of developers, if we don't have people investing in our city, we are not going to have these jobs, we're not going to have these opportunities. And only within the last week or so, we opened the new Nemo Parkway, which has been preceded by Princess Anne Four. We have opened new fire stations, we have done a lot of things, and so I would really like to have the opportunity to talk about all the good things that we have done in Virginia Beach. It's not good to have a city that is totally dependent on a single occupancy vehicle for transportation. We need alternatives, and a transit system is very difficult to provide in a strong city and in a strong region. It needs, in order to have a safe, efficient, reliable transit system which people depend on, not everyone can afford a car, you not always want to be able to have to pay for that gasoline or that insurance and so forth, you need alternatives. And it needs a fixed ride backbone in order to serve a feeder system. When we're looking at, when we get the results of the environmental impact study, which will come in a few months, we will have to make choices. And one of those choices is to do nothing. I think we really have to look at the very broad picture, we have to look at all of the possibilities for the future if we do it and if we don't. That will be our choice when we decide whether or not there's a preferred alternative. One of those alternatives is to do nothing, who we want to do.
Well, the city council is following the direction of voters. 63% of the voters asked us to investigate the reasonableness of having light rail come from Newtown Road in Virginia Beach. That's what we're doing. The study has not been completed yet. We are looking at the cost. At this point, the figures that we have seen are that could cost as much as $327 million to take it from Newtown Road to town center. The real issue is, what is the priority? What are our priorities in Virginia Beach? Is light rail more important than schools? Is light rail more important than public safety? And where does it stand in that priority? And at what timeframe would it be worth doing in Virginia Beach? We haven't made that decision yet. It's clear that if we build light rail, it's going to be an expensive increase in payment. There's no question about that. So the real question is, where do we apply our money? And whether or not light rail is a priority over other things in the city? And I don't think we have enough information to answer that question.
I don't think anybody is going to stand up here and tell you, light rail is more important for public safety or education. That's what it is. However, as a number of people here have said, we're following the mandate of the voters. We put this on the ballot specifically to determine. We have 5% draws, and that's roughly akin to you buying a piece of property and telling a builder, you know, I want a house that is a rectangle, and I want it somewhere on the property, and I don't want you to go over a certain price. Well, what are they going to do? They're going to put in a lot of contingencies. The figures that we have right now have 50% contingencies in some categories, 40% contingencies. When you take a look at that, we don't have solid numbers on this. What we know is that it's not going to go over this amount, but I feel certain that once the numbers get refined, it'll certainly hit less than that. What I will tell you is, when they talk about these numbers, the other thing you have to think about is this includes expanded bus service, enhanced bus service throughout the city. And that's very important, including bus routes that come in this general area. So that is part of this big $300 million bogey that you hear about. So in order for any transit to be successful, we have to attract riders who choose to ride, not people who are forced to ride because of economic necessity, because they don't have a car, because they can't afford a car, that sort of thing, they don't have a license. So choice riders is who we need to, who we need to address and who we need to recruit so that we can get cars off to road. And again, it's a starter line. So at some point, you know, we certainly could link to alternative technology. I would correct Mr. Burke, there is nothing free about Maglev, and I think everybody here realizes, nobody's going to give us something for free. So thank you very much. Do you have any answer to any more questions?
I'll tell you, transportation questions in general are a terrible thing to ask a politician. And the reason for that is that there's nothing that's going to happen quick about transportation. And the lifespan of politics is short. And so you need people that are really looking into the future and saying, what does the city that I care about going to look like after I'm done being a politician? And for me, the advent of light rail becoming a spine of a legitimate transit system in Virginia Beach is very appealing. But I don't think you're going to have anybody sit here and say that that appeal is so great that we would do it at any cost. We are currently on a path to look at the expansion of light rail to town center. We have only one path to go in terms of hitting the federal requirements for consideration of their funding, and that is to go through HRT. That study that we are currently going through is going to give us the overall parameters of a potential project. Those parameters will be grand enough that we will be able to go to the private sector, and we will have a fixed-price contract, not an estimate, but an actual amount that we then can consider. Until we get to that amount, we are really just talking about arbitrary numbers. I'm excited to get to a point where we can talk about that, and then we can match that up against the real world benefit to make that decision. I think we're going to have the opportunity to do that. Clearly, we're in a better position to do that than the light rail system that's already put in the ground, and I think that we need to continue to at least be open to analyze that when we get to the information. Thank you.
The voters said, the city council needs to look at light rail, and if it's reasonable, extend it. And that's what I intend to do. Once the final report's out, we'll get everything that's involved, and find out, is the cost reasonable and what are the cost benefits? The problem with light rail is right now, it's only what the paper's calling the cheesecake express. It goes to one point in the city of Virginia Beach, it's going to go to town center, a stop at the Witch Document Center. How are we going to get people from Kempville and Centerville to the office park across the street? Until we can solve that problem, that office park is going to remain empty as it is now. Right now, the growing area of Virginia Beach is Lynnhaven, but they're going to stop light rail short of Lynnhaven. That makes no sense to me. It makes reasonable sense, there's no water to cross, just extend it down to Lynnhaven Parkway, that way they can have a shuttle bus service, hit all the offices at Lynnhaven, at the Lynnhaven Office Area, they can hit all the industrial sites up there off in Nashville. But we can use light rail, we can use mass transit to help develop Virginia Beach, but we got to do it as a master plan. We can't look at it as little piecemeal pieces. I lived here in Virginia Beach in the 60s and 70s, when RG War and the other developers went crazy with building houses in Greer Prior and Kempville. The area still floods today because of poor planning here. If we're going to do something, we need to do it right. We need to plan for it for now, and we need to plan for the future, not just put a simple rail in that's going to go take the people from town center to join up with their friends and gang. If we're going to do Newtown, we need to do it right. Thank you very much.
You know, I think that when we're looking at light rail, I think, as Praminder Ray said, we have to understand the cost of it. I think if we look at the current public transportation system and we look at it in its whole, it's broken. I think many of us and many people depend on public transportation. I find that, you know, the person who takes the current form of the bus system, it takes them two or three hours because of the actual transfers, and that's not appropriate, and that's not acceptable. I think what we need to do is, when we're looking at light rail, we need to look at the sticks that are often made and capitalize on it, by making sure we don't follow that same path. We also need to understand the importance of doing nothing, as was mentioned earlier. If we do nothing, which has been the case since 1988 when we first originally talked about light rail, that's 5% increase cost of whatever we decided to do. So we have to do something, but we have to be reasonable about it. And just four years of, since our last round for city council, that's 20%. So we have to do something, we have to think long-term. And, you know, whether that be light rail or whether that be any other option, we have to do something. And I think the most important thing that we need to do is, we definitely need to look to the citizens and make the right decisions. As was mentioned earlier again, you know, are we going to put this before, you know, education, public safety? Of course not. That's not appropriate, and that's not fair. But in order to make the right decisions, we definitely need to look at the state in totality before making the right decision that affects each and every single one of us in here today.
Well, light rail, our transportation system is not really about us. It's about looking into the future, it's about our kids, our grandchildren, and we all know that because it's not going to happen in a month or six months or a year, it's going to take them 10, 20 years. Everything moves so slowly. But I'm cautiously optimistic, however, we don't know the numbers. We don't know what it's going to cost, and we don't know if we can afford it. We don't know where that money's going to come from right now, and it's not fair for any of us to have to say, yes, I'm for it, or yes, I'm against it, or no, I'm against it. Because until we really have those numbers, it's really a hard decision to make. But personally, I believe that to have a true system, we need to go to the airport, we need to go to Chesapeake, we need to go around the underroads. That's what's going to relieve the congestions in the tunnels and, we're not necessarily in the tunnels, but that's what's going to relieve the congestion on the interstates and all those interchanges that we have. So my philosophy is, let's go dead end and let's set the oceanfront, let's take it to town center, then let's take it to the airport, then let's take it to Chesapeake. That would be my wish if I were to have light rail today, just to make it a truly viable system and go where the riders really are. But I can't say, because we don't know the numbers, we have 50% contingencies, it costs $300 million to build the light rail in Norfolk, and they're telling us that it's going to cost basically that much to take it to town center. And that, those numbers just don't add up. And we know, as Councilman Earn said, we know we're not going to let HRT build this. We're going to get some true numbers and then we can make some better decisions going down that path. Thank you.
So we're not going to get an answer, is that what I'm hearing? At least not right now. In the remaining time that we have, we invite the audience to come up to the lecture, ask a question. You may direct it to an individual candidate or to the panel at large. Again, these don't have speeches, just come up and ask your questions. Tell me if you may, when you get up to the lecture.
Good evening. I'm Herr Bolsonov, representing the president down at Port House. I recently led a round of forum on light rail that was held at one of the discussions of city council, representing how the city council is better. And one of the questions came up would be, once the coordination is available on the cost of light rail, would that go back to the voters who make the decision, or would that decision be made solely by the city council? And the city council rep said that it's only the city council's power to make that decision without the voters. My question is, when the information is available, will you put this back to the voters, or will you make this decision in the city council? Who wants to answer?
If you look at the city's capital improvement plan, it was about, FY 2021, we basically have $118 million of charter debt that is available but not obligated. That's money that we can loan without, and borrow again, borrow without having federal referendums. So if we were to use general obligation debt to finance our share of the construction, that wouldn't be enough to pay for a point like it. If the city council chooses to use a development authority as a conduit to avoid the charter and borrowing this perfect facility, lobbying, they certainly could borrow all of that money without having to ask. So it really comes down to the manner of financing. I would always say for general obligation debt, it's cheaper, I think you want to be a co-owner and assistant, you want to co-sign the loan, you don't have to borrow over and above our current limit, require your participation. That's only the reason why we go back to the voters. I think the voters gave this direction, but they didn't give this direction to go out and borrow money without, if you're a chance to co-sign a note. So that's how much borrowed authority we have without asking you, unless we go this other way to develop.
Are there any other city council people that would like to answer?
Yeah, you know, we've got a half to go on this, and I think that really, what we need to recognize is that the money that is available right now from the state is limited in terms of production. And so, although I don't think any of us are in a position here, and I think, I don't think anybody's avoiding the question, I really don't. I think that we are waiting at new information. I think that we are waiting at, at new information. And we will have an opportunity to make a decision on purpose, because we will have firm prices and not estimates to, to make that decision on. But, but we need to recognize that the, the time that we have to take advantage of the state money is limited. And so because of those limitations, there may be a need for the council to act quickly. I mean, smartly, I mean, and with the right information. But, but I don't think that to sit here and say that it would be appropriate to take it to a referendum right now would be appropriate.
Any other council people currently in the city that would like to comment?
Oh, yeah. Okay. I'll, I'll.
Dylan Burke. We're, we are spending the citizens' dollars, quite frankly. And even the state dollars, the $155 million is, is, starts out as our money as well. So it's not like that's a big deal for the vote on top. We have to be very deliberate and very thoughtful about how we do that. But quite frankly, the report that we saw, the presentation that we saw on city council was that every year that lasts is, is a three or a four or five percent escalation in cost for the exact same product. And we, we went to the referendum and we did get the 63% vote back to pursue it, again, pursue it to, to a reasonable nature and, and there, there's where we start to sharpen our pencil and figure out what's reasonable and what's not. Quite frankly, if we were to set it up for another referendum, that would be another year or two to wait for an election cycle, to wait for a vote, and then figure out where it's going to go. So in my mind, it's, time is of the essence, and if we get back something that is agreed upon as reasonable, then we keep moving forward. And quite frankly, the citizens have the chance to change their mind at the next election cycle and get in new council members as opposed to change the direction of a referendum that we had two years ago.
Well, I was just going to say how the answer is, it depends. And I know that's not a, a great answer to clarify things, but I think what it says is what you've got here, and it's a very complicated issue. And so if it does depend on a lot of things, one of the main things is it depends on, we get the source of, of the money. You know, for example, sometimes we have had a long referendum to build roads or schools. Well, in those cases, it wasn't just that we wanted to ask the public, should we build those roads or schools, but to give us the authority and to borrow the money that we needed. And so if it comes to that, that situation, and that's what's needed, we certainly need to do that for a part of it, but the, the issue of, of timing and so forth is also very important. So really, until we have the information, I just don't think this is something that we can give a, a firm yes or a firm no. Okay? Does anybody in the audience have another question? Now is your opportunity.
I thought you were dropping the questions off. I didn't really want to ask that. So, okay, this is really an in comment to anyone else. The city of Virginia Beach receives city and state funds for school buses and drivers. There have been many incidents of kids left at bus stops because drivers didn't have enough school buses. Too far. Did you know that our school buses and our bus drivers are used as transport shuttle vehicles for many three-day events in the oceanfront, including Labor Day and this last weekend's Neptune Festival, and do approve of veggies? Thank you.
Do you want to direct that to any particular?
Well, can you comment first and, and then it comes, and ask the question now? But I don't have to stand up with the prize.
Yeah, I'll take a stab at it. First off, you know, the, the city council's responsibility is to fund the school system. We do not direct operations in the school system. It's completely up to the schools, generally speaking, how they spend their money. I mean, we give it to them in categories, they have to spend it in those categories. Even in fact, there are buses being used, and I was down at Neptune Castle for several days this weekend, I did not see school buses there, but the marching bands coming from out of, out of town, bringing in kids for the, for the parades. But I didn't see any. But if in fact there are buses there, I am most certain that the city or Neptune Castle is paying them, because somebody is paying for, for that work to be done. And I, I'm most certain that the school system is not paying that without, without letting us know. But, you know, as far as, as far as our responsibility is, we do write a great big check once a year to the school system, and they spend it as, as they see fit.
Any other down there who have a question?
I, I for one was aware that they do use the city school buses for that. My son Henry and I are volunteer swim coaches for Special Olympics, and they bring all the Special Olympics athletes down to walk in the parade, and we walk with them in the Neptune Festival Parade for one Hongo Strawberry Festival as well. So I was aware that they do use those school buses for that. And those school buses, again, like Councilman Wood says, that's kind of a, a decision that's made at the school board level, where we finance the schools with the state's help, and they make decisions about how that goes. Those school buses are rotated out and replaced on a very regular schedule.
Thank you. This is just an opportunity. A lot of people don't realize that the school board is a constitutional government. They are created by the constitution of the Commonwealth of Virginia. In fact, they're a superior governing body to us. We're creatures of the legislature, so they operate with great independence, which they should. The other point I would agree with you, I would hope that if we have public assets that are available, that we could use them to promote our tourism industry, if they're getting reimbursed for the cost appreciation, I hope we're using them. Because that's what we would hope, I think, you as public construction, sharing with the city would want us to efficiently use assets you're going to pay for, to help us generate revenue. Thanks, Jim. I'm certain you're right, Phil Brock, you're giving us those buses. But, but I think it's a good point, but they will do autonomous control in the school system. We just fight checks.
Sure. Your name, maybe?
Believe me, my name is Paul, and I'm picture about 90s. I'm one of the odd people I asked to do here, just because I'm a military community up on that. But I've seen a lot of changes and there's a lot of challenges facing this. But my question is, and I believe this is definitely what brought it up, the biomedical corridor?
Biostress.
Princess Anne again, I know that's already expanded. My question is, is that a, an official designation by the city now, and then, I guess it's a prepart, that, you know, as the town center is a specific area of a city like that, is there, and again, I don't know the right word, but like a tax improvement for that area? And what's the approximate sizing of that area? Is it all the way down Princess Anne to the courthouse? Is it strictly basically where it is now? Though I guess that's mostly the current.
We're, we are in the, in the very beginning stages of a very aggressive task force analysis of the market of Virginia Beach's strengths and our opportunities to move forward with legitimate growth in that area. Certainly, when you're looking at the, the same comments area, we recognize that we have a lot of strengths there in terms of places that are already located there and the ability to expand around that area. And so we are actually trying to find out exactly where to concentrate our focus in terms of which parts of biomedical are worth pursuing. And within that, what are the types of incentives we need to offer to attract those types of jobs to Virginia Beach? I will tell you, one of the things that we do have in Virginia Beach, which is a biotic that they may be very positive for this type of program, is the fact that we have areas in the city that are impacted by naval restrictions. So a lot of areas that have gone after biomedical haven't been able to get the research, but they haven't been able to match that with manufacturing because they don't have the land opportunities to actually do that. We have the opportunity to do both. So we don't have a great plan now, but I will tell you that we are very aggressive about pursuing that, and I am very optimistic in the next couple of years we're going to have some really big progress.
If I could address this, there's the impact in the Princess Anne district. That area, that is the flyway between Ogean and Pences, is the interfacility traffic area. And after the last rack, we found out from the Navy that they considered that an extremely important area to keep residential out of, because it's high noise zone area. And so, once that area was off limits to future residential development, we had to determine what was the appropriate development for that area, a very large area. And so we had one of our special plans done in about 2010, a plan for the interfacility traffic area, how could it develop? And of course, that has turned out to be where our future industrial opportunities are. And just one of those industrial opportunities would be this biomedical research area. The area that they're looking at for that is that the node that was identified in that study is one of our potential parks, industrial parks right along Princess Anne Road. But as a part of the Navy's cooperation with the city of wanting to keep the area clear of residential, this has been one of those areas that we've been purchasing property from willing sellers who wanted to sell their property, and we've been using the money that was designated and required from the rack that we spend to purchase properties to extinguish development rights on them. So we do have a very large opportunity in that area, not only for this biomedical, but other research and development in the future. So we're going to have a place for really good jobs, we, that's the area, but we've got to be very careful that we make it a good area and a well-done, and this is just one of those future opportunities.
All right, I'd like to say something about this. I'm a little wary about government plans. Look across the street, Corporate Landing Office Park, it's deserted. You go down Danmet Road, you go to Taylor Farms Industrial Park, that is almost full. The difference is this, the city government is buying, leasing the land and trying to attract businesses here. It's a private developer who's attracting businesses down the street. Government does not do things well as private businesses do. If the biomedical people thought there was a market in Virginia Beach and a possibility, they would be here. I'm not saying we shouldn't pursue it, we should look into it, but we're talking about buying acres and acres of lands, you know, spending millions of dollars. Why can't we put the biomedical thing in this empty lot next door? But if we're going to invest the people's money, we need to make sure it's the right thing to do and not just chase some dream and give money to our friends who happen to own land that they can't build on anymore. Thank you.
Let me, let me just say that from my perspective, the fact that we have Geico and USAA and Corporate Landing is a big win for our city. And the fact that we have it fully built it out, I think is a testament to the fact that we have been patient to make sure that we get the right type of people and the right types of businesses to locate in that area. And I think that is a huge question.
I don't want to attack you, but I am, we, we could put retail, build up corporate planning on our plan, but we haven't done that. I challenge you guys to drive here and tell me exactly how it started with this. And that's, that's just, that's a ridiculous statement, but the, the bottom line is, what Ms. Henry says is correct. We are planning this, and we are not going to be the ones building biotech facilities. It's going to be the private sector. The government does some things better than private sector. I think we probably have a better police department than the average security department. And I would also say, we do a horrible job at being developers and being business people and things like that, because that's not our core competence. So we do have confidence, we have confidence that we're not good at it. But the fact of the matter is, economic development, everybody up here talks about jobs. When we run these roads, they're talking about how are we going to do the jobs, and people start to back away from it. And that, that is to be a little, it gets, it gets to be a little disturbing because, you know, people are, are sticking to their scripts. But, but the bottom line is that biotech is a real, a real opportunity for us, for our future, for our kids, for our grandkids, and I think it's certainly something we should do for you to see with a lot of the cost.
We've bought all this land, I think, because we negotiated to preserve Ogean. We made a deal with Navy, and it being touted as a successful way to apply to field military establishments all over the United States. And in doing that, we bought all of this land in order to, to control the type of development that's going to occur in the area called the interfacility traffic area. Now it's our oppor, we now have an opportunity to turn that investment in that land into something more than vacant land. We had, the Navy helped us, has helped us buy a lot of that property, which has been an opportunity for us, which reduced, it reduced our costs overall investment in the property. But now it's our opportunity to buy medical development, to turn that land into a, an economic benefit for City of Virginia Beach and the taxpayers.
All right, one final sound bit for Mr. Moss.
Mark Claymont says, God's not making any more land. So clearly, scarce land is an asset. The other asset we have is excess pond water. We're the only city in Hampton Roads that actually has excess pond water, about 20 million gallons a day. You know, right now, Virginia Beach, 161,000 people work in our city. They're not all in here, but 107,000 though, their average hour, average annual salary is under $30,000. We can't build the beach you want, the beach we all want, on that trend line. That's why we made these investments. The only thing we're going to change that is to be able to do those types of things. 15 years ago, Senator took this very same approach because they knew they had no batteries. And they invested in a couple key areas, and they've been very successful. It's a benchmark practice. This is good long-range thinking. And you're, this is a good team that thought that out. Whoever bought that land at Corporate Landing, that was a smart decision. If you're a hokey like me, look at like 7,000 acres of black sand, look at all the stuff that they're ready to do because they have that land, because it's hard to find land and good schools and low prime and water. Those are great things, and that's why this is a great plan. It will bring those jobs up. That's what we have to do. We've got a good team doing it.
Now, I've got to respond to that. Mr. Moss, it's interesting that you say that, because in 1993, the city purchased a piece of property called Lake Ridge Property. It was controversial at the time. The city has now put the amphitheater on there. The city purchased it for $10 million in 1993, and Mr. Moss did.
He did vote against it.
He did vote against it. So the city just sold Princess Anne Centerra Health Campus, the site, for $12 million. So it's interesting to hear you say that it's good to invest in land because it is a good investment. So thank you.
I would rather watch Lake Ridge. You may remember the person RG Moore, the way bankrupt on that property, lost, lost a lot of money. Sovereign Bank was holding the note. My position was, buy it at the auction, at the bankruptcy auction, not the negotiated sale. We paid too much at the time of the marketplace. I'm a data-driven guy. I don't care how good the deal is, and if we did make money off it. But we overpaid the marketplace at the time. We should have bought it at Courthouse Spex, not the factory.
All right. We have time for one more question before we wrap it up tonight. Mr. Gill.
Well, thanks for coming here. This recent conversation piqued my interest on something. My daughter came here, then she went to Fort Mill, then she went to Ogean, and now she's at Ocean, at OU, and she's a biostatistics major. And what scares me is that she's not going to get a job in Virginia Beach. And now, this what you're talking about, this biomedical thing, has me very interested. She went to OU, because that's only one of four colleges in the entire state that does biostatistics. My question to you guys, this should be real quick, are you working with OU and Norfolk State and the education system? Because that's what's going to be needed for them, because I bet they got ready for it.
The answer's yes, Mr. Buckford, and that's exactly why we're putting it where, where it's going to be. We have OU, we have Norfolk State, we have TCC, we have the, the education triangle, if you will, right there, as well as Centerra Hospital, CHPD. So we have the whole, the whole order that's primed and ready for this opportunity. We are working very closely with colleges and the universities here. And so I was going to mention a little earlier, somebody said something that I wanted to talk about. We had a presentation to council a month ago or a couple weeks ago in regards to this, and one of the comments that really kind of stuck in my head that the presenter was made was that the state of California had invested. made was that the state of California had invested years ago in stem cell research. And if any researcher in the country wanted to do research on stem cell, they had to go to California. So all this dollars went to California, all these jobs are in California, because the government, the California government had the wherewithal, think of that, and put that there. And that's what we're doing with this biomedical task force or corridor, is trying to find that niche market, that niche biomedical industry, that we could be, put us on the map, so that if anyone wants to do research or work in that particular area, they have to come here. And we hold the cards for that. So yes, we're working very closely with them.
And those schools are also representative on that campus?
Lawson suggested to, I'll read you out, give you the names of the individuals, but the institutions that are part of IO Task Force, our Box Accrevers College in William and Mary, East Virginia Medical School, Union Capital, Hampton University, Jefferson Lab, MCD Hospital, Norfolk State University, Royal Indian University, Operation Smile, Riverside Health System, Medicare Healthcare, High School Community College, and particularly I O Tech Park. And we had to limit it, because so many people wanted to be a part of it, and they limited the people on Richmond. Then we have another long list of votes, and I will read all those who are on the BIOT Task Force advisory today, so you can see it's a very broad, very exciting group of votes who think this is where the possibility is.
And that's such a critical point, that your daughter going to OU and knowing that there might be an opportunity for her to stay here in county. Kids who come in from out of town to go to OU and Norfolk State and William and Mary know that Virginia Beach, so that conduit is there. Plus, getting back to our high school students who graduated from such a wonderful high school system here in Virginia Beach, maybe there are jobs in that campus as research assistants, as something where they're not destined for college right away. Maybe they'll take a couple years off, do some medical research with them, and get engaged at that level. So there are so many different dynamic parts to this puzzle, and there are just some things, quite frankly, that the city has to be a partner in, and this is one of them.
Thank you. I think you got your answer. We have run a few minutes over our allotted time. I want to thank each one of you for coming here tonight. It's been inspirational and very, very entertaining.
Thank you all for coming.